Will please come to order, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Womack. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. It's so good to see you in person, and it's so good to see all of you in person. This is the first time we've met since March of 2020 in person, so this is a big moment tonight. So, we're happy that we could all be here. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Womack. There should be agendas on the front table, and we will call the matters in the order in which they appear on the printed agenda. You may want to have one, so if you don't have one, you can grab it to follow along. If you plan to address us tonight, we ask that you please come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone and tell us who you are and where you live, as that might be relevant to the matter at hand. Everything you say is being recorded, and when those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared. They are available at Village Hall and on our website at womack.com. This meeting is being livestreamed, livestreamed on the Village's YouTube channel. We're currently upgrading our AV system, and hopefully you'll be able to see the broadcast on Channel 6 soon. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors and the community to follow the proceedings of the Village Board and see the types of matters that come before us, the questions we ask and the policies we create. I'd like to personally thank all the residents of Womack who tune in regularly, and who have been tuning in throughout the pandemic, to pay attention to the workings of their village government. Before each meeting, the Board receives a packet of agenda materials. These materials are also posted on womack.com on the Friday before our meeting, so residents and other interested parties can review the same materials that the Board members receive. We've had an opportunity to review all the information in the agenda packet. If you wish to address us tonight, we ask that you just tell us the most relevant, most important material that you want us to focus on. And finally, we're a community of neighbors, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible. So, as a courtesy to those around you, please remember to turn off your cellphones and other devices, and during that time, we would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Jayon.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Shepherd.
Here.
Trustee Dow.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Trustee Barrow.
Here.
And President Plunkett.
Here. We are all here, so we have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is Item 2, Public Comment. During public comment, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the Board on an item which is not currently on the agenda. Members of the audience may address the Board on matters that are on tonight's agenda when that particular matter is called. Is there any member of the audience who would like to address the Board on an item which is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item 3 is the Consent Agenda. As described on the printed agenda, items which are routine business that are normally not debated by the Village Board are placed on the Consent Agenda. All items beginning with the 3 are on the Consent Agenda. Tonight, the Consent Agenda consists of items beginning with 31 and ending with 319. Items on the Consent Agenda tonight are up for approval. If an item is not removed by a member of the audience and is not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and it will not be discussed. So, let me begin by asking if there's any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda. Don't see any hands. Would any of the trustees like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? No. Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
So.
Trustee Dow.
Wait.
Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Barrow, it's been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
Trustee Jayon.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Shepherd.
Aye.
Trustee Dow.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
And President Plunkett.
Aye. The Consent Agenda has been adopted, so if you are here for an item on the Consent Agenda, it has been approved. And to clarify, people who are here, all the items beginning with the 3, including land use items 32 through 37, there will be no further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the Consent Agenda, so you're free to leave, but of course, you are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. The next item we have is Report of Officers, and I do have a President's Report tonight. I am glad to report that as of this evening, due to the state of Illinois move to Phase 5, high vaccination rates in Womack and low COVID-19 positivity rate across the state, the Village's local disaster declaration has expired and will not be extended. The declaration was initially implemented on March 17th, 2020, and extended 29 times. The Village will continue to follow the public health guidance and requirements issued by the Illinois Department of Public Health and Cook County Department of Public Health. Village staff will be providing a thorough summary of the impact of COVID-19 and the Village's response at our next Village Board meeting on July 13. Next, we'll move on to a report from our Village Manager, Mr. Brainard.
Thank you, President Plunkett. I have three items tonight. The first, as President Plunkett had mentioned, we're in the process of upgrading our AV system, which is why we have these temporary portable microphones up here this evening, and we'll also be unable to use our screens for presentations. There will be two brief staff presentations tonight, so members of the audience can grab copies of the PowerPoint at the table when you walk in, and Board members have those presentations, our copy, at their seats. The project will be completed before our next meeting, and we'll have new and improved audio presentation quality and a much better picture quality on Channel 6, which we look forward. Two other items, one is the Human Relations Commission's First Community Listening Session. It's this coming Sunday, June 27th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. That'll be on the front lawn of Village Hall, and we hope to see many of our residents and neighbors there. And lastly, the Land Use Committee of the Village Board will be meeting on Tuesday, June 29th, 7:30 p.m. in the Village Hall Training Room, to continue its discussions on recreational cannabis dispensaries with a focus on Eden's Plaza. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next is a report from our Corporation Council, Mr. Stein.
I have no report, Mr. President.
5.0 is the Report of the Liquor Control Commissioner, and there is no report tonight. So, we'll move on to our Standing Committee reports. First up is the Land Use Committee, Trustee Barrow.
Thank you, President Plunkett. I move to approve zoning Board of Appeals case number 2021-Z-23, 2041 Kenworth Avenue, regarding a request for 2.5-foot fence height variation and a fence openness variation to permit the replacement of a 6.5-foot-tall solid fence in the side yard adjoining a street in accordance with the plans submitted.
Second. So, let me just explain how this is going to work. We'll ask Mr. Adler from the Development Department to kind of explain the issues in this, and then, I'm assuming you're the applicant, then we'll hear from you, and if the trustees have any questions after that, we'll proceed from there.
Our point, pretty exciting, morally, but surely coming back to normal. As typically, we'll deal with a negative recommendation from the zoning board is walk through the case. In this case, as Trustee Barrow mentioned, 2.5-foot fence height variation, fence openness variation to allow the replacement of 6.5-foot closed fence, one of the rare lot lines, 2041 Kenworth, which is also a rare lot line of 2040 Chestnut, actually a fence that I think currently goes across both those properties, the way it was installed. The west 15 feet of this fence falls in the side yard adjoining the street, so that's the area that we're talking about. The east 35 feet of the fence, they can replace that, there's no variation needed for 6.5 feet of fence. I know we're talking about the, again, the west 15 feet, which runs to the side lot line, joining 21st Street. Primary question for the Board to consider is, does the request meet the standards for a variation? And in this case, there are standards for variation for every variation, then there's specific standards for that variation. If you believe that it does meet the standard, then you vote to overturn the zoning board, they'll be able to pull permit and replace the current fence in its current location with the size and openness. If not, they'll have to put up, if they choose to put a fence in that 15 feet, they'll have to be a maximum appropriate high fence, 50% open, like a picket fence or a similar fence to that. They talk about, there's two sets of variations for fences we look at. We look at standard variation standards, and there's a number of them that the zoning Board talked about, the zoning Board did talk about, what the practical difficulty or particular hardship is in this case, and I'm sure that one, the rest of that further with you. They talked about whether this is unique to this property or not. I believe they look at, when you look at the additional fence standard, there's a standard that talks about the similar fences of this type that have been granted relief or been granted variation in the neighborhood. I believe the zoning board also considered that. On the record, there's discussion of other fences in the area that are similar, there's some that are older, which might be like this and grandfathered in. There is one that, across the street, across Kenworth, that was issued a permit in 2013 to be installed. The conditions placed on that permit are similar to the conditions that we're talking about now. It's my guess, looking at the permit and seeing that it was the fence company that applied for it, it's my guess that the fence company probably installed it incorrectly, and it never came to the, imagine, that's the one across Kenworth. There was no zoning agreement for that, that particular fence installation. You do have, in the PowerPoint, the black plan, which shows in orange where that fence is. Again, we're only talking the 15 feet, the west 15 feet here, so it's not that entire orange line, that entire orange line is just representing where we're proposing the fence. We also provided an aerial, so you could, you know, you could see the property and the property line that it shares with the home that was out at 2040 Chestnut. Any questions?
One question, this matter, for our sake and anyone else, is to be completely clear, the applicant could put up a solid 6-foot fence, the entire length, but for the last 15 feet.
Correct. And the 6.5-foot fence.
Six and a half foot.
Right.
And that, it's simply that last 15 feet, and it's subject to the 4-foot openness requirement.
Correct. If that setback corresponds with what the setback for a house has to be, in this particular district, for 50-foot wide lot, you need to have to have a 15-foot setback, and we require the same in this case for our 6.5-foot.
Thank you.
So, please come on up. Introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Seabor. I reside at 2040 Chestnut Avenue, and I'm here tonight with my neighbor, Don Schwartz, who resides at 2041 Kenworth Avenue. We're here today because we both support the proposal to replace the entire fence with a 6.5-foot tall fence, which is a light kind replacement of the existing fence, as you, I think, saw from the photos that were included in my letter, although they're black and white, it didn't come out as well as the colored photo. But there is an existing 6.5-foot tall fence that is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition. In fact, what was that, last week? My neighbor's dog was able to sardine herself through a gap in the fence, and I had a lovely time rounding her up in my backyard. My 5.5-foot was still a hell. But nevertheless, it would be better and safer for everyone for an intact fence to be in place. And respectfully, we believe that a variance is warranted in this situation, because there is a hardship involved in the requirement to have an open 15-foot fence in, or that, I'm trying to get, 4.5-foot tall open fence in from the first 15 feet east of the sidewalk before the 6.5-foot tall solid fence can be installed. And the reason for that is because my neighbor has a very energetic puppy, who we believe would be able to jump that fence without issue, and therefore would be detrimental to the safety of the animal, or the fence not to be at its full height, because my neighbor has a fence along the front and back side of the yard, so that it would be a point of death well, for the dog to potentially exit it. And also, I have three children, five and under, and it's my concern that if they see a lower part of the fence that they may view that is a entry point to climb into my neighbor's yard rather than, can fall off. So, the safety concerns are a focus for us. And also, you know, wanting to have the light kind replacement of what is already there, we believe that frankly, no one can see the first 15 feet in from the sidewalk. I'm not sure if you can tell from one of the photos that's here, but there is a large shrub that essentially camouflages this, from, if you're walking on along the sidewalk north on 21st Street, approaching this area, you wouldn't really even see it. There's no impact to public health or safety. My driveway and the neighbor across the street from me were the only driveways that are on 21st Street between Chestnut Avenue and Kenworth Avenue, so having the taller fence would not present a visibility concern to traffic passing along 21st Street in either direction. And further, you know, my driveway, I, it wouldn't impair my ability to see as I back out or into my driveway, so no impact to oncoming or going traffic, and no impact to my visibility as I back out of my own driveway. Further, you know, just sort of from an aesthetic reason, I think it would look better for there to be one fence. I realize that aesthetics are not a paramount concern to the Board, but just from my perspective, I do believe that it would be more aesthetically desirable for there to be a single type of fencing, because my neighbor and our neighbor, Eric Dahl, recently replaced the fence that is along the north portion of 2041 Kenworth Avenue, with the same type of fencing that we desire to install along the fence line between our properties, and therefore it would be congruous for there to be the same type of fencing. And further to that, the fencing that is at the 21st Street sidewalk, it would, it would just, it would look better for there not to be, you know, my wrought iron fence, a 4.5-foot open fence, the chicken wire that's, you know, at the front of 2041 Kenworth Avenue, the 15-foot tall fence followed by the 6.5-foot open fence. It's just a lot of different fencing in like a very small area, and we just think it would be aesthetically better for it to all be 6.5-foot tall and the same fencing, a light kind replacement of what already exists. But further to that, it's really just the safety concern with regard to the dog and the children. And further to that, the side lot on 2041 Kenworth Avenue, which is along the southern portion of their property adjacent to my garage, they have a fenced-in side yard area, and as I mentioned before, there would be, you know, fencing along the west side, my, the fence that issue along the south side, and then the same fencing to the east. And so, you know, that's kind of all the same, and there would be like a dip. I'm probably not explaining this very clearly, but there would be a dip, that makes sense, like this, and then go back up. Anyway, it would just move, and also, I think it would be, it would interfere with their use of their backyard and having the privacy they desire to congregate in their side yard with their friends and family without, you know, intrusion from neighbors. And so, anyway, the neighbors, neighbors have supported this application, as you saw in the packet, Eric Dahl, which is the neighbor that resides at 2039 Kenworth Avenue, which is the first lot into the east from 2041 Kenworth Avenue, he's written an email in support of this, as has Mr. Tom Sexton, who resides across Kenworth Avenue to the north from my neighbor, Mr. Schwartz. And so, essentially, you know, everybody, you know, who is most proximate to the fence is in support of this, and we respectfully request the variance to promote the safety of our properties, to improve the aesthetics, and frankly, to prevent any further issues of the dilapidated fences already there. So, if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Fascinating question. What type of fence are you going to be putting up?
So, that's a great question. So, my neighbor, Eric Dahl, who resides, as I mentioned, to the first lot into the east from 2041 Kenworth Avenue, has a 6.5-foot tall closed fence that is already existing along the east side of my neighbor's property, and it would be that same type of fence. It would match, it would be the exact same.
He just put that up.
That was, was that 2019?
About 43 or 44 years ago.
No, 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 that was when I lived there, Don. So, I'm living here. Yeah, for two years.
So, that type of fence on the east?
That's on the east, and then we want to have the same on along the south.
It's in the nearest property.
That's right.
Chicken wire stuff. What is that, what's going to lift there? I know that's not part of this, but sort of, you just went through a whole lot of, yeah, you went through a lot of fences, so I'm trying to keep it straight in my head.
Well, my name's Don Schwartz, I reside at 2041 Kenworth, I appreciate all the evidence you have, and all the time you've been here. So, I've been in the home about six years, and so, there was a short fence of usual, they have, the dolls have several young kids, they have a dog, we have a dog, we actually lost a dog, we have a new dog. So, what we did is, we put a lattice, it's like five feet, and a lattice in the top, and so, when, actually, I did make it, when this was denied, I actually made a request for a fence along, it's directly south of where I was, south where my house is. And so, there's a question as to whether I own that property. It's three feet from the sidewalk east. I was told that I don't really own the property, and I think maybe someone before me might have, might have been told the same thing, so this chicken fence is whole cord on the side, like, I want to put a white picket fence there, which is consistent with what would be directly adjacent to it, and be, but I was told I can't get a permit to do that either, and so, it's like six inches difference, probably apparently that I don't own, I don't really understand how I don't, I mean, we're both lawyers, but it's hard to understand how I don't own or have the ability to put a white picket fence right where that is. It's like, I have some houses that you may maintain, which are just directly east of the sidewalk, and so, we want to put the fence directly east of that, but apparently it's four feet to the wall, and it's 3.5 feet from sidewalk with the chicken. So, I was denied from that as well, so this has been going on for several years, frankly, we're just trying to upgrade the community, make it look nicer, kind of, slightly, frankly. It's a little frustrating for us. So, the reason, one of the reasons I wanted to address it, I couldn't, the issues, we wanted to just simply match the fence that Eric and I put up, we just want to have it for consistency's sake, it would be better. We have a whole bell shape, was on file with a permit. I didn't know about this zoning ordinance when I came in town, and we looked directly across the street, mirror image house, it's exactly the same as our house, and they do have the 6-foot fence, so it really never occurred to me, we made an application, that was not to be permitted, because it's like, again, another mirror image to what's directly west of. So, it was a little difficult for me personally, because I've gone through this for like two years, multiple applications, and fortunately, Stephanie is the one actually filed this application, which I was, we'll fill it, and then I actually submit it, whenever denied, but it's important to me, and again, we have a dog that's pretty much a year old, and she's just pretty active, she's only a year old now, and she has three really young kids, and, you know, there are these, I wouldn't say dangerous, but there are bushes there that have, you know, pricks that the three little kids can have all the portable, and I could get all the sex. And it's totally an intrusive, you just, you can't really see it, most of the neighbors say, well, what are you doing? Because they didn't, when we saw the sign that was on a tree, they said, what are you guys doing? So, according to the fact, there's a worse effect, and they can't really see it. So, it's hard to help and save the community on open, that's an issue, and I think it is a truth, not a truth, but it is a hardship for us, both neighbors, because of the status of our children, these young, and our dog, you know, a leaper that, he thinks, is a dog, and, well, that's one, but I mean, I'd be more than happy to replace the chicken wire fence, too. I'm trying to spend money and make it as nice as I can, so. We're trying to do. We're a board, we had a, several of you, I believe, were on the board, or just, I hope you can see fit to allow us to do that. We use a reputable fence contractor, fence works, and frankly, I didn't even know we hired them, that we needed a fence permit. Everyone's told us we can't work it, we're not going to get, we're not going to do without permit, because we were, you know, together all the time. So, we're just trying to upgrade our system.
Any other questions from any of the other Board members?
Yeah.
Please, go ahead.
As to your properties, where do you intend to locate these?
Into the exact location of the current fence. So, current of the fence faces my lot, 2040 Chestnut Avenue. There was some discussion at the zoning board appeals, like, well, Stephanie, if you're the one that's applying, that technically the fence has to face 2041 Kenworth Avenue, and that means you have to move it three feet, yeah, or three, three inches back in a tenement facing your lot. I mean, clearly, we're just doing this cooperatively, I think that, you know, our intention is for the fencing to match what's already along the eastern side of 2041 Kenworth Avenue, so, I mean, I think the issue first is to say, well, can we use a 6.5-foot fence, the full length, I think it's about, what, four feet into the sidewalk where we want the fence to stop, and so, you know, my goal is to just have the fence continue, you know, along the same line as the other fencing that's already there. I have fence that goes across the entire back of my property, just in the back, it's the north side of my property, and it would be my intention for it to follow along in that same line.
You certainly would want a three-inch gap to replace where it is.
Yeah, I meant, yeah.
They attach, if they attach this, we want to just replace it.
Yeah, and if it needs to be that, Mr. Schwartz, if the applicant for the actual fence permit, that it can continue in the same line and face my property to make it congruous, of course, we're willing to do that. We just want to get past the variance issue first, and then we'll make sure the fence is, you know, in the same line and facing the right way, and all that kind of stuff.
So, understanding the safety issue that you're discussing, what I heard you say just now was that with the landscaping that's there, you don't even really notice that there's a fence there. Wouldn't that apply to a 4.5-foot fence, too, if you are a 4-foot fence, if you don't really notice a 6.5-foot fence because of the landscaping, so it wouldn't impact, and wouldn't it not, a shorter fence also wouldn't be seen?
That's a great question. So, I mean, it wouldn't necessarily be seen by our neighbors, because they can't really see it as they face our property, you know, facing east from 2021, you know, if they're standing at the sidewalk, they wouldn't really see it, but I would see it, because I have my sidewalk, I'm sorry, my driveway, which is, you know, out of the asphalt pavement, and then there is an approximately, I don't know, like, six foot wide margin between the northern edge of my driveway and the fence, and currently, that's a combination of two trees, a single large arborita, and basically like some stone paving with like gravel mixed in in between, between the stones. And so, although there is the large arborita there that's sort of at the end of the driveway that would sort of prevent, like, neighbors from necessarily noticing, like, I would certainly notice from my driveway, because I can see within that six-foot, you know, strip of stone and gravel, I can very, very clearly see the edge of the fence. And further to that, Mr. Schwartz, from his side of the property, you know, as I mentioned, they have the, the southern side yard of theirs is fenced in, and that shrubbery is really only on my side, so it would be highly visible on the whole side.
It's also dangerous, in fact, that she has kids, and we have dogs, it's a pretty , from a whole perspective, you know, kids, our dog, it's, it's a wonderful dog, immigration.
I'm going to look, if, so I've already mentioned this, but on 21st, do you have a fence on the third?
Yes, I do. I have, so my property is a corner lot, and so, we have a wrought iron, I guess, if you call that, a wrought iron fence that faces Kenworth Avenue and then turns a corner on 21st Street, and then it stops at my driveway. And then there's one segment, one segment of wrought iron fence, and that's what I mentioned, that's in between the edge of the driveway and then the boundary of my property, so there is one piece of wrought iron fence there, but my driveway is open, there's definitely a fence on my driveway. And I think that's like a 4.5-foot open fence.
Right, question, both of you, but, I understand you want that the fencing
I understand you want the fencing question to be six, six and a half feet all the way across from your Dolls, where it starts, and it's flush, basically, in that corner, so your southeast corner of your property. That runs along your garage. Would you ever consider starting at the end of your garage, to 21st Street, tapering the fence down? So we're going, sometimes fences go from six and a half feet, and they taper down, because what I'm thinking is a couple reasons. One, you're going to taper it down, so that when it does match, if you had normal fence down the chicken wire on 21st, it would match the four feet. And so anybody walking up the sidewalk is going to see a fence that more is open versus just the roof, just the wall. If that makes sense.
I have to think about that from a different angle. Are you saying that it would, like, slope, the fence would slope down?
Yeah. Some fences we've seen go up, you know, they start.
As opposed to a stuff up.
Mr. Adler might know better, but what, what's the height, or they sort of, maybe he has no idea what I'm talking about, but it sort of arps up that way.
I hadn't considered it.
Wouldn't you?
I got that, I don't think about it. I have to see what that would look like. I mean, basically, what you were saying would be that the, it would slope up at a grade from four and a half feet at the front, and then gradually meeting up to six feet within that first 15 foot segment? So it would sort of.
I don't know if the fence company can do that, but sometimes they.
If I could address, I mean, I'm, the reason you haven't considered that is because of the fence, myself and Mr. Doll. It's, you know, it's consistent at one length, and so we're just trying to make, kind of, for my aesthetic, which I know that's not your standard, but having it symmetrical just seems to me most logical, since I see that it's over. I don't know that it's 60, I don't, I don't think it's six and a half feet. I'm 60, no, I don't really follow it. I don't really think it's six and a half feet above my height. So, that's the reason. It's just strictly for symmetry, and I hope someone can tell me why I can't change the wrought iron grid, that picket fence, or the mesh fence, because I certainly, that's the other part of the whole house, and I often don't know what zoning wise I can do to get a white fence there, because I just really didn't understand where my property starts and ends, because I have passes that I maintain, which would be west of where I put the fence. So I'm not sure where my, I don't really understand conceptually where my property starts and stops. What rights I have, that the fence, that mesh fence, which is a subject now, but it would be the later day. That's what I really want to replace. And I certainly want to do this, because it's winding down, how we have to replace this one way or the other, because it's dangerous for my dog, the dog, the guy who, I want to, this is a year old, I want to attack him, I was really wonderful. But with the mesh fence, I wish someone could tell me what my rights are, because I certainly want a white picket fence.
You keep looking at me. No, I, I, I was just, I was just confused, and it's not before you today, but I'd like to know for future reference. What rights I have.
Yes, please.
I believe what's being discussed is the area between the sidewalk and the property line. I think most of the village board members know that sidewalks don't typically go up to somebody's property line. They fall within the right way of the village. When you look at this survey, it looks like there's probably two or three feet from the sidewalk to the property line. And I think that's the area that is being discussed. And so nobody is allowed to build in that area, that right away area. So if you look at, I think it's page two or three in the report, between the sidewalk and the line, probably between two and four feet. So I think that's the area we're talking about. I should mention, chicken wire fences aren't allowed. And so if they're the chicken wire fence, technically, that doesn't even meet material standards for a fence. And it's actually something we can't grant variation on. Now, we do know people use chicken wire on fences to keep animals out of plants. So it's not something we typically go around and enforce. But if somebody wanted to put up some whole chicken wire to fence their property, and we would tell them it's not an illegal material. So.
John, nice touch about that, just so, just to address the residence issue. I mean, he wanted to put up a fence on that side. So this is a long 21st Street, correct? There's nothing prohibiting him from putting up a fence. It's just that it has to be, however, yeah, so he can take the chicken wire down and put up a four foot, open his fence, and nothing that we're doing is stopping him from doing that.
Where? Well, your survey. You might want to get a new survey or have a surveyor come up, oh, you were this line it. So it would be, it would have to be east of that line. It would have to be your property, not in the area between the sidewalk and the property line. Just that, that small area. That's the area where if you were asking to go close to the sidewalk, you were probably being told you can't do that, because that actually will provide you.
No, I mean, like, how far east of the chicken wire is that way?
As long as it's on your property.
Well, we're in relation.
You would, right, I don't know that. You would have to work with the fence company and the survey that you have to determine that.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you, because I didn't install it.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's not really.
Just so we're clear, we're trying to keep making a record here of the actual variation that's before us. Mr. Schwartz, please come in and we'll talk to you, but.
Absolutely, a picket 50% open four foot high fence is permitted, permitted in that area. I have to look at that. I think the issue is, you're right on the survey, and there's a bunch of arbor vida on 21st. So where he could build, it's a big bush, a couple of big bushes. So that's part, that's what the issue is. So, did you understand my point about taking up a fence?
I did. And we've seen, we've seen people do the 15 foot, and they then don't want it to go up to a six and a half foot, you know, so you have a two and a half foot. So what they do in that 35 foot, where you could have the tall fence, that's where people will typically taper off. So you've got the four foot high of open fence, and then you'll go to a closed fence that will taper from four foot high to six and a half feet in that permitted area. That's typically what we see. If somebody wanted to do something a little bit different, go from four foot at the west property line there, and just taper directly up to six and a half feet on the east property line, that would require variation, because you would have a portion of fence to see that before you do that. Yeah, we've seen people do that.
But if I might add, for an established fence company, that's not a difficult thing to do. We have on one of the sides of our yard, begins at six feet, and then tapers to five feet, in order to be lower so we can communicate with owners. And it's a nice gradual step down. It's very smooth. Maybe you can affect the six or so.
Do you have any more questions for Mr. Adler, the applicant? So this zoning case came to us with a negative recommendation, and it was a unanimous decision by the zoning department, by the zoning board. I know sometimes these things are difficult. I do like trustee Sullivan's concept, and I have seen those. And I, I used to have a side yard adjoining a busy street, too, with three small children and a dog, and an open fence on a very busy street. And it sounds like where the bushes do a very good screening job. But I'm just going to ask if any of the trustees have any, you know, further comments, knowing the zoning board's decision, if there's any more discussion that anyone wants to have.
Okay, I would just echo comments that recognizing, having, having lived in the village for quite a while, and lived on a side corner lot, and I've lived on, lived in a couple of different locations, and there are specific zoning regulations that affect corner lots differently than other lots, smaller lots and larger lots. And I recognize the frustration that you both are clearly feeling around, we just want to replace the fence, and why is this so complicated? At the same time, as we have responsibility to uphold the code, uphold, uphold the code for the entire village, and think sort of, as much as we can, I think, around the big picture, and whether the circumstances that you're bringing to us, how, if the next applicant brings those similar circumstances, how they affect our decisions. So I just wanted to acknowledge your frustration around this. I appreciate you taking the time and coming to speak to us forward about this.
I would, I would echo what trustee Jaya said. Fences are tricky, and it's very rare that the board grants variations for fence permits. I would say extremely rare.
I think the struggle here, like trustee Jaya said, I also happen to live on a corner, I live on the corner of Mike Forest. And we just have to, as a board, it's really hard to recognize that any decision made from one fence done has the opportunity to have an effect on many, many other properties. And, you know, we have lots of homes that are on corners that have kids, have dogs, I have kids and I have dogs, I've had a puppy, I'm on, you know, and safety of children, of course, is incredibly important to us. But I think that if we started to feel that safety was the hardship here, then we'd have a lot of requests in front of us to change our, how we do our fencing on these corner lots. And I'm not comfortable doing that. And because I think that that's a much broader issue than this one particular phase. I think they have a lot of options here, to be honest, in terms of what they could do to meet their needs. If they want consistency, like they talked about, then they could just do a four foot fence all along the side. They have four foot fence on their property. So I think there's lots of ways they can address this issue. And for that reason, I just don't see how.
I would agree with trustee Dowd. Our code speaks about hardship with respect to the property. Physical condition, shape, surroundings of the property imposing a difficulty or hardship. And again, as one who's had dogs and children, I appreciate that they can be challenging and can be difficult. But these aren't, these aren't hardships with respect to the property, with respect to your dog and with respect to the chicken. And if, as trustee Dowd said, if that becomes the standard, then we think that group part of wingup would be on the variation for that reason. And that's simply not our standard. We focus on the property, not necessarily on, on the kids and the pets. I have some trouble finding the basis for proving this.
So this items comes to us with a negative recommendation from the zoning board of appeals. It would need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation of the zoning board. So I would ask the, it's been moved and seconded, I would ask the clerk to please call the wall on the motion.
Trustee Jaya? Trustee Sullivan? Trustee Shepherd? Trustee Dowd? Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Barrow? Nope. And President Plonk?
No. Motion is denied. I'm sorry, I feel for you, but I'm sure staff can help you with your other fence issue, and maybe look into the step down. I'm sure you could get a contiguous fence to look very nice.
I understand that we can have a slope between four and a half to six in the first 15 feet, if the standard is six and a half. You know what I'm saying? I don't understand.
First of all, that wasn't necessarily the standard that was, that was offered. It was just as part of a discussion. And don't think that that was automatically granted, simply because one trustee was spitballing and trying to see if we can come to a count.
So I would need to apply for a new variance then, to do a slope from the four and a half foot point to six and a half foot point within that 15 feet?
I mean, since I won that, I mean, I think Mr. Stein's right, or I'd echo President Plonk. I'd work with Mr. Adler and staff on recommendations to your fence company and come up with some options. Or there might be other scenarios, and other people beyond my idea, definitely probably have better ideas. That might be a little bit more palatable, but not obviously kind of guarantee.
So we can have John, or Community Development Director, contact you tomorrow, or his staff, and they can talk you through what the next steps and options would be to move forward.
Thank you. Back to Land Hughes, trustee Barrow.
Thank you, President Plonk. And I move to adopt a resolution number 2021 Char-35, authorizing the village manager to execute a contract in the amount not to exceed $171,955. TESCA Associates, Evanston, Illinois, comprehensive plan rewrite.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Adler, I believe you have a short presentation for us.
I do, yeah. Another wonderful PowerPoint. You have this. This is very exciting. I think everybody knows we intended to start this process in 2020, but the pandemic blew us down. But we had perfect timing, coming out of the pandemic, and a very exciting project. This is the first time that we're looking at rewriting the conference plan since 1990, for 30 years. Strangely enough, one of my stints was, was here in 1990, one of my stints, so. Didn't have a lot of responsibility riding in at that time, so I'm very excited about this undertaking. As we talked about, there's a lot of new things that conference plans have, sustainability, diversity, inclusion, more on transportation, circulation, economic development, health and wellness, infrastructure, culture. We also know that we need to update the plan as it relates to our housing chapter, and many of our, really, all of our commercial districts. We put together a selection group of 12 people, including the chairs of the plan commission, housing commission, and environmental and energy commission. Happy to say that we got really good responses. We interviewed really good planning consulting firms and their teams. And I'm also happy to say there was consent, we were unanimous, that TESCA and Associates, the team that they put together, was the right, right choice for this project. And we were very, very excited about their presentation, and their, you could tell it was a project that they really wanted to do, that the team wanted to do. And, you know, the sides really liking the response, their, their interview went really well. There's a couple of things that we really liked. They did concentrate more money on the housing, youth assessment, and commercial market analysis in the, the subarea plan than the other interviewed firms. They, they also did provide the greatest number of hours, slightly, I think it was by average 74 hours than the other two respondents. They also put together what we felt was a really good community engagement plan. And I'm sure some of that is going to change, and we might move things around, but they've done a number of things in other communities that we thought would really work well in, in rural then. Originally, when we talked to TESCA, I think they were thinking that the project could take about a year. We explained just because of the nature of what our plan commission does, and what else they might have on their agenda in the next year, and also just sort of staff's bandwidth with other things we have going on, it was agreed that this is a project that could take up to a year and a half. And we think that's really a reasonable amount of time to get this project done. As the, our point shows, we are slightly under budget on this, so that was obviously something also that was positive. Lee Brown is here from TESCA, and I'm sure if you have questions of TESCA, or questions of maybe the team that they put together, I'm sure you would be happy to answer those. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about how we got to the point.
Any questions from the trustees?
Was it a number of consultant cues about the listed or?
Actually, one, one of the things that, and I know that the election group really liked about TESCA is they actually had a couple of more consultants. They had a DEI consultant, a diversity, equity, inclusion consultant, and they were the only team that actually had that consultant as part of their team. And then they also broke up the housing needs assessment and the commercial market analysis between two consultants. And we thought that as a, as a positive, because when you're, you're looking at housing needs, it's not just about, necessarily about numbers. You know, and I had this discussion with trustee Dowd, a housing needs assessment is more than just affordable housing. It's about really what does a community need housing wise, the affordable components, a big portion of it, and something we really need to have answered. But the fact that they brought in two separate consultants to. answered. But the fact that they brought in two separate consultants to handle that task, we thought was real odd. All the other respondents either had that function within the main consulting firm, the main planning firm, or they brought one firm in that was in the book.
I have two questions, actually. So first of all, I am very excited about the housing needs assessment, as I specified. I mean, I had a discussion about it. So thank you for including that. And I think it'll be really, really important for our community to look at. Not just needs for affordable housing, but just an overall assessment of our housing needs. So in terms of the extensive community engagement, I don't know if actually this question should be done on you, but do you have a goal? How do you measure that we're getting enough resident input in this process? You know, is there a targeted goal around how many residents are responding to survey? You know, what do you use to measure this success in community engagement? Because obviously, that's such an important part of making sure what we build is something that the community, or not build, but something that we develop is something that the community really wants. So do you have a target there? I just...
I'm Lee Brown, and I'm president of TESCA Associates. I won't make up whatever. I think the reality is, is what, we measure success by having more people turn out at the end than that we build interest over time. Dowd spoke about the nature of it being closer to 18 months than 12. It's a balancing act in terms of assuring that there's some momentum, that we don't lose a pace and suddenly people lose interest because it's been X number of months since they started this process, and they've already attended three or four or six meetings. So we always have concern that we don't want to have this drag out. The participation should be addressing more than one mode of attracting interest. So it's different in every community. Those communities that are particularly internet-literate or are on their social media all the time will get a different group of tools that makes sense for that community. We don't give up on written materials and the newsletter and all the things that are part of the community's regular life. We will definitely be producing content that is available for those. We like pop-ups. We like spending time at the farmer's market. We actually bought a tent so that we could engage in the community's regular opportunities and regular activities. Rather than having an event and inviting people to it, there's already events, we're going to attend those. But I couldn't tell you that, you know, that the turnout has to be, that we need at least 1,000 responses to our quick polls on our project website or some magic number. But when we're seeing that one tool is more effective than another, we will turn our attention towards that tool and amp it up. I'm not really able to tell you that there's going to be one particular approach that works best for WOEMET. And in the beginning, what we do is put together a plan for a broad set of tools, and we work with the staff to assure that those make sense in the community. And we will at least try all of them until we find that there are one or more that are more successful.
My second question, though, thank you, that was helpful. I'm sure you'll have a variety of opportunities to reach out to residents, so I'm excited about that. We love to go to farmer's markets, so we'll share our feedback there. The second thing I just had was, in projects that you've done like this, or just based on everything I looked at, what kind of involvement do you see or do you think is necessary with METRA and CGA for this kind of broad planning? Is there anything? And what's your experience been there?
There are times that METRA in particular will be an active, involved entity. He's unfortunately wary, takes the time to actively engage. I guess there are programs, but we find that METRA and CGA, if that makes sense, are much more concerned about drawing opportunities for the land uses around the stations, generate traffic for their siblings, and therefore they are engaged in the planning process.
Any more questions from the trustees?
One, perhaps, is there a way that you can determine whether or not you're hearing only from, or principally from, interest groups or groups that have a particular advocacy rather than a broader group of residents?
Well, for one, we will be taking the opportunity to work with staff to identify groups that might not regularly be heard from and go to them, as opposed to inviting the community as a whole and waiting for, you know, equal participation. An enormous number of resources in terms of folks in the community who are, have specialties, have special interests, have expertise, and we don't want to lose track of the fact that that's something that we don't necessarily bring to the table, but we can draw from the community that is already here. And we will work with the staff, who ask you, as a matter of fact, if there are folks that we should make contact with. Because in a combination of direct interviews, sometimes one-on-one, but more often in panels, and events, we can reach everyone. We proposed a series of, calling them TED-like pods, in which we have subject matter, in which short videos can be created that can be played over and over again or on demand on the website to draw attention to issues that are of concern to the community. Another part of that engagement strategy is to identify issues that people don't really think about, or think about but don't bring to you.
One last question. I know you haven't started this process yet, but as part of the process of learning about WOEMET, the RFP, how would you characterize WOEMET? How would you describe this community? What are you, what's special or not?
I won't tell you exactly where I live, but I can walk there.
No further questions?
Two of our principals, former founder of the firm, we, I've lived here for 25 years. We are proud of this community. We were cited to be selected, not just because we were selected on the basis of one of the more extensive evaluations I have ever seen. We're proud of the evaluation itself, but also of the value of that.
Well, that sounds pretty cool. And I think it's great that we set the tone by having the chair of the plan commission and the environmental and energy commission and the housing commission be part of this process. And I just, I talked to a couple of them, and they were so enthusiastic about your firm doing this and just so excited. And, you know, it's bringing a broad spectrum of the community together from the start. So I'm really excited to go forward with that.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity, and we promise to make this longer.
So this has been, this motion has been moved and seconded. Could the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Trustee Jaya.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Shepherd.
Aye.
Trustee Dowd.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
And President Plunkett.
Aye. Motion has been approved. Next, on to the finance committee, standing reports. Trustee Kennedy.
I'll let him fill the extension agenda.
Okay. Administration committee, trustee Dowd.
Yes, I believe you have one item, which is item 6.31, which is presentation of the second quarter 2021 boards and commission membership report. I don't believe we're going to have a presentation of that correct. So as chair of the administration committee, so for the board as well as for the public, this was, this report came out of the review we did, the administration did over the summer with trustee Sullivan and trustee Barrow in terms of providing some sort of ongoing update to the community as well as the board on where we stand with current vacancies on our boards and commissions. It was really in an effort to make our process as transparent as possible, also to make sure that board members understood upcoming vacancies and potential needs that might be out there. And so I'm really excited. This is the second time that we reviewed this report. And so I had recommended we keep this report off consent so that the new trustees could see it and we could have an opportunity to ask any questions. Then in addition, since we have a wonderful new president, President Plunkett, I thought it might be a good opportunity for her to just share the process she's going to be following in terms of identifying candidates and reaching out to the community and things like that. So with that said, maybe I'll turn it over to trustee Plunkett to just briefly on, you know, the process you're thinking about. Of course, this is obviously very new to President Plunkett, but I just thought it'd be helpful for others to hear that. So speak for a few minutes and then take any questions.
So and I discussed with all of you, when I started this position, I wanted to make sure that we had a collaborative approach to appointing residents to our commissions. So my plan is to have the chair of the commission and myself take an active role in interviewing potential candidates and identifying those from the Talent Bank questionnaires, as well as to, you know, use staff to, you know, with their expertise, if candidates have questions, if, I think it's just really good. Some of these commissions are very technical. And so I think it's important that the potential residents understand exactly, you know, what they might be doing, what's on tap in the next couple of years. And I think it's great to have, you know, if they can ask staff questions, staff can reach out to them too. So right now, we have vacancies on the EEC, Environmental Energy Commission, the Transportation Commission, and the Plan Commission. Not a lot of vacancies, but we do have vacancies there. The Village has been advertising those vacancies through eNews and social media. And I want to thank all the residents who have submitted Talent Bank questionnaires already. You have not been forgotten. We just want to encourage, you know, as many people to apply because, you know, sometimes you might be, you know, the most talented, qualified resident, but we already have, you know, four people on the commission with similar backgrounds. So, you know, we want to make sure that we get a good balance of talents on many of these commissions. And, you know, some more than others might be in need of residents with particular skills. And sometimes it takes longer to fill those roles than others. We really appreciate all the residents who are giving of their time to serve on a board or commission. It is so valuable to the community. And your contributions are just, have been amazing. And I can, you know, point to certain commissions that, with the EEC right now, they've developed, they're working on a sustainability plan. And our transportation commission, Health With Our Active Bike and Master Transportation Plan. And we know our plan commission is going to be working hand in hand with TESCA and Associates on the comprehensive plan. So these are very important positions, and we really value the residents who volunteer and all those who are volunteering. We have a number of new applications to, for our housing and human relations commissions, which is fantastic. But I just, you know, I want to let residents know that, you know, those commissions were recently filled, so it's not likely that there will be openings soon. And, you know, these commissions, all of the commissions, they don't have, you know, very quick turnover rates. But someone who, myself, who did apply for a board and commission years ago, and I had to wait for a long time before there was an opening, it was worth it. So I just want to thank all the residents. And we will be working, like I said, I will be working collaboratively with the chair of the commissions and with staff. And when I do that, then I will, you know, inform the board and let them know ahead of time so they can help. And I would ask the board to please come to me with any questions or any ideas, or, you know, tell your neighbors, tell friends that, you know, the Village is a great place to volunteer, and we appreciate everybody that's willing to step up. Any of the trustees have any questions about the process?
About the process, just so I understand, if I'm a resident and I apply to the commission, do I get a notice that my application was received? And do I get some information at all, any kind of information around there are no vacancies, these are the vacancies? Like, what does a resident receive if they step up to volunteer?
Sure. I'm going to turn you to Mr. Raymond. But yes, they receive an acknowledgement. And then I recently also asked to say, you know, if there's not likely to be a vacancy soon, could you please let them know? So it's not like they're waiting years and without, you know, anything. So maybe Mr. Raymond can, like, add to that exactly what the residents get.
Correct. So that was a good change we put in place just in the past month or two. So that's often the case, because when a resident submits a TBQ, they don't necessarily know that there's, whether there's a vacancy or not. And it would just kind of go into the ether and sit there. So Karen Norwood, our deputy village clerk, she takes in the TBQs. We have two different drafts that we send to residents. So if there are no vacancies, we have a draft, not a letter, it's just an email, still a little more accessible explaining. There's no vacancies at this time, we provide a link to the webpage that does list the terms for those boards and commissions, and that will follow up with you, you know, if your skills are the right match at the right time for that board or commission. And if there are vacancies, the response is a little bit different, letting them know what the process will be. So I think that's been a positive change, so that residents understand we've received their TBQ, we're not just ignoring them, and that why they may not hear from us for some time.
If I could just add on to that, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Mike, which is, I think, so we, you know, really wanted to prove the first point of contact and make sure that they did receive something that was more personalized, for lack of a better word. And then I think our goal is to reach out on an annual basis?
Yes.
So then we sent finally, we reached out on an ongoing basis to everybody who submitted a Talent Bank so that they knew we hadn't forgotten about them.
And ask them if they would want to update the resume on file, because obviously experiences change over time, and what their interests may be depending on what vacancies they have available. So we'll be doing that probably shortly after the new year, every year after the holiday.
So I just want to thank the staff for putting this together. And because I think this is really helpful for all of us, board members, to see. And I also think it was something that was very important to the community. So if any members of the community are listening to this and they have some additional feedback out of the report, feel free to either reach out to Mr. Raymond or myself, because I'm still chair of the administration committee. And then I just want to reiterate what President Plunkett said, because, which is, if there is residents who are interested, we do have vacancies on transportation commission, EEC, and plant commission. So while we do have a lot of residents who we appreciate have submitted a Talent Bank questionnaire, if there are others who are interested, this is a great time to put your name in the hat, as President Plunkett will be looking to address those in the next couple of months. So thank you. And I believe that was it for the administration committee.
Yes. Well, thank you, trustee Dowd and the administration committee, because I think it's important to value our residents, and I think it's important to hear from them. And I think that a lot of the work of the administration committee, making sure that we've filled commissions and that we're advertising vacancies and that we appreciate our residents is really important. So thank you. Next item is, okay, administration committee, then we have municipal services committee, trustee Sullivan.
We have one item this evening, item 6.41, and made a motion to adopt resolution 2021 R-33, authorizing the village manager to waive the competitive bid process and execute a no-bid contract in the amount not to exceed $754,906 with ALAMP Concrete Contractor Schaumburg, Illinois for the 2021 street resurfacing project.
We have a motion, does there a second?
Second.
Trustee Shepherd, thank you. Yes, Mr. Raymond.
All right. Thank you, trustee Sullivan. So I'll have a brief summary. All right. Thank you, trustee Sullivan. So I'll have a brief summary of the item, and then if there's questions, Bridget and Ryan are here to answer those. So it's not often we're excited to bring to the board a road resurfacing contract, but here we are, excited to do that for you this summer. So before the board tonight, is a contract for $755,000 in additional road spending this year. So as the boards are aware, and we've been discussing for the past several years, we're in a very strong financial position. We're going to be spending much of our time later this year focusing on how to spend down our general fund reserve, and get back within our newly adopted policy. And for many years now, it's been the board's priority to invest more into our roads. And we had an opportunity this year to utilize really excellent competitive unit pricing through our ALAM bid, and get extra work done, taking our annual road program from our standard 2.3 million to 3.1 million, about 0.65 additional miles of road. So the reason we're waiving the competitive bid process tonight is because we've already bid this road competitively earlier this year, already awarded the contracts. This, because it was a state-related NLT contract, we couldn't simply do a change order. We had to waive the bid and enter into a new contract later. So a bit of a formality and a technicality, but that's why we have that. So we're excited to bring this before the board. As I mentioned, Bridget and Ryan are here. Ryan, kudos to him. This was an incredibly heavy lift in the middle of the spring and summer to get these additional roads designed on the fly. Usually, we're designing these all winter long for an early bid letting leading up to the spring. So really great work by the staff to get this in front of the board tonight and get some extra work done. And we will still have reserves left to work through as we're working on our FLY 22 and 23 budget.
Any questions for Jeff? Yep, sums up. Trustee Dodd, I think that, that sums it up. So.
If I could just say, thank you for the photographs of the core samples. I think that's the most interesting we've had. And instead of the packet, a long time.
How many pages were in the packet, I know.
Please don't say that we read every page.
I know. Well, they're forced, over 1,400 pages, but I, it did sound a bit disingenuous to say that we read every single page. A lot of contracts at the back, but we got all the really important parts. Yes, as we take a vote. So it's been moved and seconded, and could the clerk please call? Please call the role on the adoption of the resolution.
Trustee Jaya?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Shepherd?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
Aye.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Excited. We're a busy construction season. Okay, next on to Public Safety Committee, trustee Shepherd. Judiciary Committee, trustee Jaya. There are no reports from our special committees. There is no additional new business to discuss, and there are no actions to take with regards to pending matters referred to standing committees. So we are on to adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.